Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon and welcome to the July thirteenth informational meeting. I'd like to note that Councilmember Sale is absent today. We're going to get started with a report from Councilmember Nitzer on the IM twenty-six Task Force. We've got a big agenda, so thank you, sir.
Yeah, and given that, I'm going to try to be respectful of time, but there's quite a bit to update on since I missed last week's meeting, so I'm going to update on both meetings. So we've had two meetings so far, one with one remaining a week from tomorrow. Just as a background and a reminder, IM twenty-six was, went into effect on July first. Certain things have now gone into effect, but there's some things that will not start until the state promulgates rules and gets some of their work done. That date that they have to promulgate rules is by October twenty-ninth, and they must start issuing cards by November eighteenth. The department has issued RFPs to select a vendor to implement those systems, and they just implemented and are, sent out another RFP that they're looking for submittals for a, what they call a seed-to-sale tracking system. That is, that rules process is progressing on schedule. We did get a draft for the public to review. That's a, essentially a first draft so that people can, were able to, they took input in a number of ways so people could make a, give input into that process, and they're going to use that input to develop another draft. And then, starting in August, is when they'll go through the rulemaking process. And they are looking to go to the interim rules committee on September thirteenth. And if that is approved by them, they would file those rules, and those would be effective by October fourth. And that could slip if the interim rules committee would send them back, but they need to have that done by October twenty-ninth. As you know, Amendment A is still pending a decision, but as we've looked at it quite a bit closer, we don't have a lot of concern in terms of what we're doing, that our work would be wasted or anything, even if it were to be found constitutional. Essentially, the Department of Revenue would have to go through an entire, the same exercise again, and they'd have to have rules in place by April of 2022 to essentially, they would be the people, that would be the licensing authority for the selling of recreational or what they call adult use. But regardless, the Department of Health has to set their rules. We have certain authority locally, and with that, I'll just get into our meeting. So our first meeting, we talked about why we were there and what we thought we could accomplish. And given our reasonably short timeframe, we talked about, an obvious goal would be to try to come up with a framework of what our joint regulations could look like. As you may recall, the city and the counties share joint zoning authority. And so that would be a good accomplishment if we could get that done. And then there is some desire, if we could, to potentially find consistency where possible, but we also recognize we're three different bodies, we're different jurisdictions, and then, of course, the city is very different than a county. And then you have joint areas which are kind of transitionary, so what the rules may look like may differ. And with that as well, everybody's at different places, and this Lincoln County is the farthest ahead. They've adopted a zoning ordinance. They're working on their license ordinance that they're looking to adopt later this month. Minnehaha County adopted the pause, but they did adopt a pause that lasts sixty days after rules are promulgated. So they have the longest timeframe, probably till something like December to get something on the books. And then we have our pause in place. That being said, when it comes to the joint regulations, we talked about the timelines. Joint regulations and our own timelines are our own ordinances. Essentially, we kind of have, we're saying, October first is kind of our unofficial deadline. So we would look to be bringing things through the process, starting in August, to planning commissions, and then late August, early September, first and second readings of various ordinances to be effective by October first. So that's what we talked about there. We talked about what we, what we really had authority over. And essentially, from the joint standpoint, we have joint zoning authority, but we don't have joint licensing authorities. And that's important, and what that means is anywhere outside of city limits, including the joint area, the county licenses. So whatever they decide in terms of what they're going to license or not license, if they're going to have a number of licenses, that's what will govern, but it's the zoning in which we would have joint authority over. We talked about having the mayors and representatives from other cities at the, in the counties at our next meeting, which was our first one. And then we did take public input, and we heard some good stuff from a few of the stakeholders, some of the consultants you've seen at some of these meetings. And then we talked about those timelines. So then at our second meeting, we reviewed the things that we had learned since our last meeting, and there was a lot of things that had happened at the state level with the release of draft rules and a number of other things. Minnehaha County is adopting a public smoking and consumption ban of marijuana, which is what has been being passed around the state. They're going to be working on their business licensing coming up. There, there again, they have the most time, and they're also kind of, quote unquote, the farthest back in terms of getting things done. The two commissioners shared their thoughts in Lincoln County, or excuse me, Minnehaha, that they'd like to be cautious and conservative to start because they can, and they could always open things up later. Lincoln County obviously is the farthest along, and the mayor's office and myself also shared something similar to kind of what Minnehaha was talking about. The more we've looked at it, this is very fluid. There's going to be a lot of changes to state law and things in the next year or two, and potentially starting smaller and then, and potentially opening up would probably be a wise way to go. We talked about the consensus of, of some of the things that we would like to see in a joint zoning ordinance, and that essentially would be limited uses, separation distance between the uses, separation distance from sensitive uses, and potentially a very simple signage regulation. And our, our three staffs are going to, are working on that. They'll bring it to the next meeting, and they'll basically have a draft for us to take a look at. And as long as we bless that, that would be something they would bring forward to the joint zoning bodies, which would have to go to the joint planning commissions first and then to us. And there was a discussion that our two zoning ordinances, our two joint ones, look very, very similar. So trying to keep those as consistent as possible, so the rules are the same in either joint area, would be beneficial. There's been a lot of other stuff I won't go into for the, for the sake of time, which is really just a lot of meetings and conference calls, and attorneys from throughout the state are talking to each other. Stakeholders are talking to each other. Everybody's kind of learning as we go. And we will have that meeting again, not tomorrow Wednesday, but the Wednesday after that. That will be the final meeting where we'll essentially hopefully have our draft work done, and all of the jurisdictions are working on their individual ordinances, which, like I said, you'll start seeing some things starting to come forward in probably the beginning of August, so. Sorry for the long-winded report, but, and I could go on for a couple more hours, but that's.
Counselor Nitzer, we'll leave that for council remarks, maybe two meetings from now, on the fifth Tuesday. All right, next, we have the report for the Urban Eyes Development Commission. Is there someone ready to give a report on that? Counselor Kylie?
I'll give a brief report on it. It's, we, we met July eighth at four o'clock. And the following items were all approved. The final draft of the 2022 Unified Planning Work Program was approved. The Sioux Falls MPO Self-Certification was approved. The MPO Public Participation Plan was also approved, and the Harrisburg Master Transportation Plan was, was approved. The following items were listed and presented as informational. The first draft, the 2022-2025 Transportation Improvement Program, Statewide Long-Range Transportation Plan, update was presented, and the 2021-24 Transportation Improvement Program. An administrative amendment, amendment number twenty-one dash zero zero four was presented as well. The next, next meeting is August twelfth.
Thank you for your report. Now we'll move on to council remarks. Are there any council remarks today? Counselor Ericson?
Thank you. I'll just give a brief report. The legislative ad hoc group met a couple weeks ago with county officials, as well as neighboring mayors and council members were invited. We had a decent group there. We went through what was our priorities the last couple of years. We did cross a few off for changes and are also making some adjustments to the language in the housing area and also the triage area. If you do have any priorities you'd like to see added, I would encourage you to reach out to David Bixler and Jim David to have anything added, the next step that we do, I believe it will be presented, and then we take it in front of the legislators, as well as, and the city council will be approving something. So there are some changes to it. You'll see some of that simplified. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Tom's got a couple, Mr. Greco's got a couple of slides I want to share. We did end up having our CCOG meeting last week, Southeastern Council of Government. One of the things that, that was brought up is, on the left is a home that the city donated to the Southeastern Development Foundation, which is a organization that CCOG basically is the governing body of. And so this is kind of the before and after of some of the homes that we've been donating. And like I said, the Southeastern Development Foundation's done a great job. So this takes you to the next before and after picture, and it takes you kind of through each one of the rooms of the home of the before and after that got there. But the property was actually bought by a first-time home buyer. It was listed, I gotta make sure I get the numbers correct here, sorry. It was listed at $212,000, and the property was actually, there was a little bit of a bidding war, and was finally sold at $229,000. So this is what's happened from the houses that Rose and Lada and the other ones that continue on. Rather than, this is one of the homes that would have probably ended up in our landfill rather than being rehabbed. So it really turned out kind of nice to, to see these properties revitalized, moved into a neighborhood so that they can be useful. So that was what I wanted to report.
Thank you. Counselor Starr, any other council remarks? All right, thank you very much. So we'll move on to our presentations for today. And up first, we have our Sioux Falls Canaries. We have a dynamic duo here to present, Brian Slipka and then Jack from the Canaries. I ran with Brian in the hundred-day challenge the first day, so I hope you're still kicking and look forward to your presentation.
Great. Well, thank you, and thank you for having us. Glad to be here.
Yeah, thanks for having us. I, you know, we've had, I've been able to meet privately with a lot of you and look forward to meeting with the rest of you. But, you know, thanks for having us. Appreciate the time, and we'll just dive right in.
Feel so short standing next to Jack. My name is Brian Slipka. I am the founder of True North Equity Partners. True North Equity Partners is a family of independently owned and operated businesses. I'm the managing partner of all fourteen of these entities. It's a, it's a kind of a fun story to tell that I won't tell today, but I'm really proud of what, what's happened over the last eight or nine years. To make a long story short, I acquired a property or a business back in 2013, and slowly was just, still had a day job at the time, and slowly, over, over the course of quite a few years, kept buying businesses, small Main Street America, heartbeat of America, near and dear to me. I grew up in a small business environment with my father, and so as I worked through corporate America, I realized that you can have a greater impact and influence oftentimes in the small business. And felt called to it, and so started acquiring with, again, with my hard-earned capital, small businesses. And through a lot of good fortune and grace, and just really grateful with the team we have. In all, it represents about 500 employees across 12 states and a lot of different entities and locations and whatnot. So super proud of that, and one of the operating entities is, I'm proud to say, the Sioux Falls Canaries. And that was a, as you guys all have heard probably, you know, we acquired it in March of this past year, so just a few months into this, and we are still getting our feet wet. Really, the mission of True North is that we are all about servant leadership. As many of you can probably attest, you go through life, and there's a lot of situations where, you know, you see good leadership, you see poor leadership, and one of my great mentors, Tony Dungy, is one who's had a huge impact on my life. I was actually with him in Colorado for a few days last week, but really helped, helped me learn what servant leadership's all about. And that's really the mantra of our, of our businesses and our culture, and really, really the crux of what we want to bring to the community here in Sioux Falls with the Sioux Falls Canaries.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off that point of, about servant leadership, you know, we talk a lot within the True North family of companies about uplift, equip, and empower. And, you know, I've worked within five of these companies for Brian over the past few years, and it's, it's exciting to see, to, you know, step into, whether it's a transportation company or a precision manufacturer, or a business brokerage, or now the Canaries. And, you know, that sort of vision permeates throughout, and we, you know, we're very intentional with making sure that, you know, we practice what we preach, and it's not just, you know, something on our website that we can, you know, tell people or tell business owners that we're, you know, potentially trying to acquire. It's something that we preach, you know, throughout the entire 500 employees or 500-plus employees.
Next slide?
So True North and the Canaries, just to give you a little bit of background, which I think will be helpful for all of you. You know, as, as, as you probably have seen over the years, the Canaries have, have, have been a strong part of the community in many respects. In other respects, there's been some apathy that has, that was created over the last few years, not through no fault of, of anyone in particular, but just, just the reality is that there wasn't a lot of reinvestment made by, by the previous ownership. And, and so as I've gone through my professional life, my, my partner in the Canaries, Anthony Albanese, who also had some success of his own, in his own right with Duke Cannon Supply Company, we were college roommates, and we talked about, back in college, wouldn't it be fun someday to own a minor league baseball team? And, and I was born in Sioux Falls, so Sioux Valley, no longer, but Sioux Valley. My, my, my mom's side is from the Vermillion area, and so I grew up coming to Sioux Falls a lot. I moved away when I was still young, but grew up coming here often. So it's a little bit of a homecoming. There's definitely strong roots here in South Dakota, and we're just excited to be a part of the Sioux Falls community now. The reason why Sioux Falls was attractive for us, specifically the Canaries for all of you, is that there's a ton of opportunity to have impact and influence in the community through professional baseball. And as I think you'll see later here in a few minutes, the investments we're making, we believe, will echo far beyond just baseball and echo into eternity in many, in many ways. And so that's really, really motivates me as an individual, as well as Anthony, that we can be a part of something really special that transcends just the actual event of baseball. Next slide?
And, you know, as, as Brian said, the growth and trajectory of this town was super attractive for us, obviously a homecoming for Brian. But as we, you know, two, or two months before the, the season started, you know, we, True North acquired the Canaries. And, you know, you can look at every statistic, at every website, Sioux Falls is the place to be. It's a good place to live. You know, all of the, the metrics, but, you know, in, in terms of what the city is investing in, you know, we saw that, you know, as I'm boots on the ground for True North this summer, you know, Ark of Dreams, Sherappa Place, Washington Pavilion, the Levitt, everything downtown. And as things, you know, move outside of downtown, there is so much investment and partnership from the public and private sector. It's, it's exciting to see, and after talking with most of you, you know, extensively about, hey, you know, here's what we're doing, and here's how we got this done, it's exciting to see. And, you know, that's just for example of, of the pieces in play here in, in Sioux Falls and South Dakota at large. And we're super excited to have the, the opportunity to continue building that brand, which has been here for, for over a century.
All right, well, you guys well know a lot about this, but when we look at just some of the data points that we're looking at, and the private, the private and public partnerships that are, that exist here in Sioux Falls is pretty powerful. I can't think of another city with a similar MSA that's doing what, what you all are doing, and you should be really proud of that for sustainability, for, for growth, for all sorts of positive favorable things for the city and for the citizens. And so, again, something that was really exciting for, for, for us to, and again, getting a chance to meet all of you. We're just really grateful to be, to be part of the city.
Yeah, and that, that 400 million mark, I found out in the past day that it's actually probably over a billion. That 400 million mark is only regarding downtown. And, you know, that just shows, yeah, there's, there's money being invested in the right places, and it's, it's intentional. It's thoughtful.
All right, this is what I'm excited about to share with you, just again, as an update to the city council, what we have done so far and what we, what we are talking about when we, when we speak of invest, impact and influence. Again, one of the reasons what made us decide to execute on the purchase and acquisition of the Canaries is what we felt like was upside within the community and being able to make a difference in the community. Again, something that can echo far beyond just, just whatever the task was. In this case, providing an excellent baseball experience and baseball team for the public. But some of the things that we've done, and many of this, many of these things you may have already heard about, but the, the Daktronic scoreboard, awesome opportunity to, to really meld together a South Dakota company with a great need that the, that the, that the stadium had. And, you know, it's a publicly-owned stadium, but we said, hey, this is important for us to privately invest, you know, almost half a million dollars to provide that, that citizen experience, that, that patron customer experience to have a fun time at the ballpark. So when you think about pre-game, in-game, post-game, for the kids, for the family, it matters. It matters. And you see, you see, you've already started to see some of that impact and influence. Another, another upgrades, you can, the child's, the kid's zone area, new, new recreational areas. We've, we've made a lot of those investments because we felt like it was extremely important for the game experience. So when families are leaving the stadium, they can say, hey, you know what, this is something that is exciting for the Sioux Falls community. You know, when, you know, when you, when you come to Sioux Falls for the weekend and you look up through social media, what are the top 20 things to do? I think the Canaries came up, I want to say eighteen or something. Our goal is to make it, you know, a lot lower. And so that's a good way to kind of look at it, when that, when that out-of-town family comes in for the weekend for a sports event or whatnot, to create a world-class sort of experience for, for the family.
And before you touch on the, the community fund, you know, we've heard already from families and from season ticket holders and those who have come to games in the past that are coming back. And people are, we, you know, we, we have our staff outside and saying, thanks for coming and all that. And the sentiment that we've been hearing is, you know, it gives us juice. It gives us some more inspiration to keep going and keep investing because people are coming back to the games, and they're having a good time, and they're telling us, hey, you guys are doing a great, this is much different than it was. And, you know, when you make an investment, you want to see a little bit of ROI, and that's kind of long-term, for sure. But right away to see that, saying, hey, something is different about, about this in the Canaries, it's, it's super exciting to see, and we're not going to stop.
And then the part that I get the most passionate about is the Canaries Community Fund. So that's, that's a, that's a designated fund within the Slipka Foundation that my wife and I started about 10 years ago. It's a three-pronged, Slipka Foundation really has a three-pronged approach: education, community stewardship, and, and character building. When you think about some of the attributes that, that our today's society and the, and the today's youth need more than anything, it's, certainly it's education. We all can agree on that, but it's the, the community stewardship and character-building elements that really, really are going to make a difference in our society. And so that's one thing I couldn't wait to launch, the Canaries Community Fund. And we, we have subsidized that with a quarter of a million dollar, basically seed. And, and Anthony and I are planning to start distributing that here, actually in a few weeks. We're going to be making an announcement. It's going to be, it looks like eight, maybe nine organizations are going to be benef, receive funding in the Sioux Falls, and then one in the outstate area for everything from ball fields to, to social causes and concerns to, to, again, all consistent with our, the three-pronged approach of education, community stewardship, and character building. And so we're going to, we take that really seriously. I've actually sought some counsel from, from, from folks that have led, like, led different initiatives to the mayor on who, who could we, who would be good representatives of what we're trying to advance. And again, the whole promise is, is that we want to be more than just a professional baseball team. We want to, we want to be a fabric of the community.
So if you have any initiatives, let us know.
Now we're going to get, now we're going to get slammed with requests.
Uh, fill out the form and then.
And we, we do have an application process that we're making, you know, again, the important thing about stewardship is that, you know, stewardship is a, is a dual, there's duality to stewardship, right? So, so we do have a formal application process that we have everybody go through to, you know, create some accountability around things, but.
So this piece, I'm pretty excited about. So I grew up playing baseball, went to college and played baseball for four years. And so when Brian brought me into his office and said, hey, you know, we're going to do this. Do you want to be a part of it? And I said, you know, heck, yeah. So a little bit of a background, obviously you guys know the Canaries have been around for over a century, you know, in different iterations of, of baseball. Local town ball, and then now to professional baseball. And, you know, in recent, you know, instability, but recent just, you know, lack of focus and lack of investment. And so that, that's what we're trying to change right now, this year, and it's next year, of course, and into the future. A little bit of an update on where professional baseball is in America. So during COVID, Major League Baseball contracted 40 minor league baseball teams. That's a lot of teams, and that's a lot of players. And so, you know, the first reaction is, okay, baseball is dying. They're, they're cutting a bunch of teams. But, but rather it's, how did you put it?
Well, really what it is, is it's a flight to quality. What they're, what they're looking for are cities that are willing to step up and provide enhanced product.
Yep.
Much like what you saw what the NFL has done with like requirements around, you know, you know, venues and all that. Major League Baseball is starting to really put the squeeze on their, their, their experience, their fan experience. And so, so while, again, surface contraction may look like a negative, we see it as an eventual positive, particularly for the city of Sioux Falls, which we'll talk about in a minute.
Yep, and, and continuing on that, it's, you know, when, when they contract, we are an independent baseball, a professional baseball team, so we are not a major league baseball affiliated. We're a part of the American Association, and the American Association is an MLB Partner League. Because when they contracted these, all of these teams, they needed a place to go and find players if need be. And so we've seen a spike this year of, of players getting signed from the Canaries and going on to play for professional or major league baseball affiliated teams. Three in the past few months, we're, we're, we know that our, some of our players are already talking with, with other teams as well. And we've got three Olympians that are going to be playing, which we're super excited about. But the quality, just immediately when that contraction happened, the quality of our play got better. And Major League Baseball, all of its organizations are relying on our league and our teams to provide good players. You know, one went to AAA, so it was a call away from the big leagues. One went to AA, and one went to Single A. So we're super excited about the trajectory of our league and also getting into minor league baseball, basically during COVID. There's a lot of upside on that, and we're super excited.
And just as an update for all of you, there is ownership meetings for the American Association that's taking place in Chicago at the end of this month. And we will get an update from Major League Baseball. They will be present at our meetings to give us a status update on, on how the Partner League is going. But this notion of flight to quality is something I want you guys to keep in mind. A good example is, is of a former American Association team, the St. Paul Saints. During this contraction, so they, they now have less affiliated teams, less teams that are of, that are of the responsibility from a governance and a payroll and a player standpoint within Major League Baseball. Each team has less to, to, to have responsibility over. They actually, they actually recruited away from the American Association, the Saints. And so, so to a AAA affiliate. And so they're going to continue to do that with, within cities and within, and within ownership groups that they have confidence in, that they believe in, that, that are showing investments in the community, that are showing investments in baseball. And so part of what, you know, I'm standing here to talk to you guys about is like, you know, the collaboration and partnership that's going to be required. Because there is, there is an opportunity for us, I think, over the next five to 10 years to, to, to earn, earn that right. So, and, and that's, that would be a really favorable thing for the city of Sioux Falls in a lot of different ways. So I'm super excited about that, about that, and, and we feel like there's just plenty of upside. I do also want to say, I'm, I'm actually happy we're an independent team. team right now because, because it gives us a chance to, to have, uh, to control the future, you know, and, and to have impact and influence over the future. And what, what do we want to be when we grow up? And so I, I like that, being in that position and I think that'll prove, um, prove valuable to the city. And that's, uh, you know, just one of the things that I've been telling Jack and I've been telling the front office of the Canaries, um, you know, first time I met all the folks in the front office and we've had some changes. We've doubled, we've more than doubled the staff. We're about two and a half times as, as, uh, larger than we were when, uh, three months ago, which wasn't saying a lot or isn't saying a ton, but it's, but when you think about how much investment we've been pouring in, um, you know, and that we're willing to pour in, it's, it, it does say a lot. Um, but this notion of earning the right, why, we need to earn the right for the community to, to want to attend a game. We need to earn the right for, for, um, for all of you to say, hey, you know, these, this, this Canary, uh, these Canary folks are, are, are folks we want to partner with and collaborate with. Um, all of that has to happen and it starts with us. It, it, it goes all the way down to, uh, you know, the servant leadership mindset, all the way down to the, to the, to the game day interns. And so hopefully if you guys have been to a game yet this summer, you've, uh, you've experienced some of the changes or just the subtle subtleties of, of how we care and that servant leadership mindset. But when you think about the future, what we're trying to do this year and next, and really just indefinitely is we got to continue to earn the right with the, with the, with the fans, the citizens, uh, to become a fabric of the community. Um, that includes game day experience. Um, it means we need to invest in staffing and then as you, uh, as we illustrated before, the community investment. Now, long-term, I mean, certainly there's going to be some, uh, conversations that we're going to want to have with you. Uh, we're tenants of, of the city. Um, and I'm a business guy and I see the operating losses that the city endures from, from our lease. And I want to be, I want to be part of that solution too. Um, I think there's ways to, to curb that. Um, uh, but it's going to take collaboration. It's going to take, uh, partnership and, and that can mean just a ton of things, right? Um, and we're committed to figuring out and, uh, we're committed to bill, uh, being in a relationship and building in a relationship with you as we move forward. But, um, being a business person, you know, I, I, I do put that fiscal stewardship hat on, uh, often. And, and as I think about that in these types of, uh, private public partnerships, that's going to, that's going to, um, reign, reign, reign supreme in my, in my head on how we, on how we create a win-win environment long-term.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, we're focused on this year and next, but obviously we have to have conversations about the future and, you know, what we're looking at in five, 10 years. Um, but we're, we're, we're being thoughtful in what we're doing right now and next year to build the foundation so we can keep on going rather than, hey, you know, we, we slighted on this and slighted on that. Now we have to go back. We're trying to build a thoughtful foundation so that, you know, that, you know, year three, when that year three strategy kicks in, you know, we're ready to go. Um, but we're, you know, excited about that collaboration.
Yeah. And just in summary, uh, and then we'll open up for questions, but, um, you know, we're just excited to be a part of this and, and, uh, hopefully understand why we wanted to meet all of you and present in front of all of you as well as make this available to the public is that, you know, we're serious about this. We're putting our money where our mouth is. We're, we're, we're having our actions speak so loudly. And, um, and, you know, we want to be a high character, high integrity about how we, how we approach everything. And so we want to earn the right. We're going to continue to make these investments in the community with immersion in it. And then we're going to continue to make investments, if it makes sense, um, uh, into, into the, um, into the Canary Ball Club. And so, uh, as, as, uh, as Jack wanted, I'll let, say the, the best for a lot, for Jack, but, uh, you know, we're, I'll let you say it.
We have rehatched the Canaries and we are excited for our future together as partners.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. So we'll open up for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Jack, sorry, I know we played kind of email tag for a couple of weeks. I'm looking forward to visiting with you again soon.
Yeah, same.
Um, I'm excited about, um, what you're infusing already in the team. I like the scoreboard. I think that old one up there was steam-powered, so I don't know what you did with that. It might be in the museum somewhere, but, um, were the Canaries officially like for sale on the market? Or, and if not, what was the, maybe you covered it in here and I missed, but what was the intrigue or interested in if they weren't?
So they, um, the ownership group had expressed an interest to divest, um, the, you know, the, you know, their ownership in the Canaries, um, uh, in, in, in different, uh, business advisory M and A circles. And me being involved with, uh, one of the largest business brokerage, uh, offices in the country, uh, Sunbelt, um, I knew that they were on the market. I, uh, I, uh, at some point last fall, I think there was maybe a small, uh, article saying that they, that the owners were contemplating what their future was going to look like and that sort of thing. So that's, that stuck with me and Sioux, you know, Sioux Falls obviously is near and dear to, to who I am. And, and so that was, you know, when, when Anthony and I said, hey, let's go look and see what's out there. You know, the Sioux Falls was one of the initial calls, you know?
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I always enjoy going to a couple of games a year and I think a little fresh blood and infusion and some ideas and that'll be great and much needed. I look forward to seeing what you can do with it. So good luck.
Awesome. Thank you.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Um, no questions, but just want to thank you for your renewed energy. Um, I think it's exciting to kind of really put the Canaries back on the map and have them be that destination for family events and functions. And so, um, it was a pleasure, pleasure meeting with you, Jack, and just like I said, your renewed energy into the facility as well as to the team and what it means to the community. You, you aren't absent owners. You, you own and you want to integrate into the community and that speaks volumes, um, instead of just saying, hey, we, we're up in Minneapolis and go do good things and just status quo. So I'm, I'm hopeful and I'm excited about the renewed energy and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Naitzer?
Yeah, uh, thanks for the investment, the team and the community. I, I talked to Jack about that. That's going to be so important, having those connections in the community and, and being out there, you know? Um, one question I did have is obviously before, you know, you'd walk into the box office and since it was under one ownership, you had, um, Canaries and you had the Stampede. So are, are they completely separate now? Are there separate employees? Were the Stampede still housed out of the same place? How does that look?
Separate, separate legal entities, business entities, um, and separate, separate groups. Uh, they, they do share some, uh, of the same vendors, uh, like Spectra for, for catering and, or, and food and whatnot and a few other vendors. So there's some synergistic sort of collaboration, but they are, they are now separate, uh, entities and have been for, uh, for I believe six or seven years. Um, so.
But they did at some, at some level a couple of years ago, still share the same space of the front office and now they're completely out.
Yeah.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause like when I, you know, when I went in there before, I mean, if you're saying you added all these employees, it was already kind of busting at the seams in that little box office. So who, where, where are you and where are the Canaries? Or the Stampede, I'm sorry. Are you in the box office?
Yeah, the Canaries, the Canaries employees, uh, are in the, uh, in the box office area.
Okay.
Yep, onsite at the, at the, at the stadium. And I believe Stampede is onsite for them. I don't, I, I don't think they have a separate office space.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you. And I, I also had, uh, I, I've termed Canary Jack because I can't keep all my Jack friends, uh, separate. So I appreciated the, the input. More of a statement too. We, as a city, have a responsibility to give you much nicer facilities to, to play out. And wherever we go in the history, I'm looking forward to planning that. But I want to make sure that it's a, um, concerted, planned-out effort. And we've done a lot of try to do Band-Aids and then we pulled some funding and, and, and there are even some simple things that we could do to make the experience better, both for your players and for the community that attend. So, um, I'm committed to do and the right thing, but it's got to be a plan that makes sense for the community, makes sense for you guys. And I, I look forward to that, Jack. And I had a chance to really kind of have, not necessarily strategize, but really have a look of, okay, what does baseball in Sioux Falls look like? And how, how do we make it just like all the other things we do in Sioux Falls to be a, a gem? And right now we're, we're getting there, but we're a long ways from doing that. And, and the facilities are a big part of that. So appreciate your side of it, uh, taking care of the team and making that work. We'll, we'll figure out a way to, to negotiate through, uh, a deal.
Sounds good. And I appreciate, I appreciate the sort of mutual sense of accountability, uh, cause I think that, I think that's where it starts. Um, you know, uh, you know, how often in life do you, you know, I, I have a seventeen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old and I'm like, you know, don't do this, don't do this, do this, you know? So we're trying to control the controllables with what, you know, doing this. And, um, and, uh, you know, we believe through, uh, you know, we believe through our faith and a lot of other reasons that, that, that good things happen as a result of that. So, um, we just want to continue to focus on what we can control and, and we appreciate that though. That means a lot because, because there are some, there, there are certainly things that have come up from time to time that, that we have, that we didn't realize we were walking into, uh, since we, since we acquired the team.
Yep. And, and, you know, piggybacking off of, uh, you know, your statement, um, you know, the city did a study a couple of years ago and, and we've, uh, we've, you know, diving into that and seeing what the recommendations were. We, we know that you guys are thinking about these things and, and so are we. And, and, you know, we're excited to, to partner in that way.
Well, we really appreciate you guys presenting here today, uh, in front of us. Thank you. We're available if you need anything, but we're going to move along onto our next agenda item.
Sounds good.
So thank you. Um, our next agenda item is a link update, uh, by Alicia Kuller, the Assistant Director of Public Health.
They're a little taller than I am.
Good afternoon.
A lot taller than I am, actually. Uh, good afternoon, City Council. Alicia Kuller, Assistant Director of Public Health. I am here to visit with you about the link, specifically Senate Bill 186 and the tremendous gift that we received, received from the state of South Dakota. But being, we are just six weeks out from the opening of the link, I knew there would be a lot of curiosity on the status of operations. And, um, just as of this morning, I was excited to hear that the link has already performed four hundred patient triages in six weeks' time. They're even busier in the second month than they were the first month. Uh, we're hearing great reviews from our hospital emergency room partners, as well as our law enforcement partners, that we're seeing reduced, um, ED visits, um, due to the challenges faced by link patients, as well as, uh, reduced jail processing and just real efficiencies created for our law enforcement partners. So I invited Maddie Miller here today just to be with us so that we could publicly recognize her and her team as they are the ones that have operationalized the link and they've done a tremendous job. So today, um, what I need to share with you, oh no, did I turn it off? It's Tom here. I pushed the wrong button. My apologies. Can I recover? There we go.
Great work.
Thank you. So Senate Bill 186, um, this, um, donation to the link or allocation from the state of South Dakota, um, has been made public in the past, but I need to share with you a few more details so that we can, um, talk to you about the intention of the dollars, our draft plan of spending down the dollars and then seek a supplement for facilities as well as the health department so that we can begin spending the funding. So, um, you know, how this money came about, it was really a group of folks who, who, you know, demonstrated the need for this funding and Mayor Paul Tenhaken, um, testifying, um, to the legislator about needs that, the ongoing needs that the link has. Some of those needs being in security enhancements, uh, operations, as well as a build out of second floor when we're ready to do that. And so as I mentioned, um, we're so grateful for this gift from the state of South Dakota and, um, we're ready to start planning for its use. So the total is three million dollars and in order to align most closely with the purpose of the funding, um, as I mentioned, it's really three buckets, security, operations and capital. Um, in order to, you know, really draw down the funds as efficiently as possible, you know, we're really looking at supporting a portion of the link operations that most closely align with how the bill is written, which is for mental health and behavioral health crisis intervention. And then for the remodeling, there are two phases of projects that are still yet to do for the link, which I'll get to in a little bit more detail. So over the course, um, through now and two thousand and twenty-four, we would anticipate being able to spend down all of the dollars. And I, there's some date in, uh, let's see, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, where any unspent dollars will be reverted back to the state. So the operating, um, costs that we've identified that most closely align with the intention, which is the behavioral health and mental health crisis intervention, are the services around psychiatric acute crisis stabilization, sobering observation and security enhancements. One of the pieces that was added from the planning of the link to the implementation of the link was twenty-four hour security onsite, um, which is an increased cost for the operation, but also promotes safety for the staff and the patients as well. So the operating costs would be about fifty thousand dollars a month drawn down from the grant direct paid from the city's allocation. For the remodel, so the remodel of the annex, um, is really in three phases. Phase one was the completion of the link, which I hope you were all able to see at the ribbon cutting or, um, were able to attend a tour at some point. Phase two, um, we were here a few weeks back. We had a, um, a contract that was approved by council that allowed us to do some planning, um, for a limited remodel of second floor, not the entire second floor because we want to preserve some opportunity for service growth, but really looking at, um, things such as, um, more security enhancements, uh, and a recreation area for patients, some remodeling of office space and such. And then the future will be really dependent on how the space is utilized. We want to take the next six months or so and see what services are most popular at the link so that we can really design second floor with intention. So those are the three phases of, um, capital projects for the link with phase two and phase three being able to be supported with this state grant. Just a little bit more detail on phase two, which we are proposing to complete this year. Um, the staff and public restrooms on second and third floor being remodeled, that client recreation space, um, which we know has a great therapeutic benefit. There is some limited space in the basement that they are able to use, but they need for dry storage. And then also some front entrance improvements. We'd like to have that be a secure entrance, um, where people can, they have camera access and be able to, um, just safely let people in and out of the building. And then phase three, as I mentioned, you know, we really want to study the use of the building. So an example could be over time, if we find that we need more private rooms for psychiatric, um, crisis intervention or detox, then potentially we could move the entire sobering observation unit to second floor and then complete some more private space on first floor. So it allows us to really grow with the needs that we're seeing in the day-to-day. So those are the intended uses of the funding. Um, it takes us through twenty twenty-four. Uh, we believe that it aligns with the purpose of the funding and we, um, we've made this proposal to the link board. They're supportive and we will also be, um, visiting with the state as well. We've submitted our draft plan so that we can get their, um, reaction and response to see if there was any adjustments that they would have us make as well. So I wanted to make sure that you were briefed, um, because in order to start spending down the dollars, once we have all of the appropriate authorities and permission in place, in twenty twenty-one, we would be seeking a five hundred thousand dollar supplemental for city facilities so that they complete the phase two remodeling and a three hundred thousand dollar budget supplement for health so that we can support some of the operating costs. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, um, for your presentation. We'll open it up for brief questions and I don't want to limit your questions, but we are running into a, a time, um, as we need to go into an executive session that will take some time. So, uh, Counselor Erickson, and then we'll come around.
Um, just the last thing that you had, well, I'll back up. I spoke to a couple legislators the other day that asked if additional funding for the triage was needed. And of course I said, yes, we'll take whatever you want to give us. I mean, I'm not going to be picky with it. Um, so that's looming out there and those conversations are taking place to see if it's something that we need. I know Rapid City is also in need of additional funding. So just to keep that on your forefront. Um, the last thing that you said about the five hundred and the three hundred is that we would do, but it's the state funds, it's not additional?
Yes, yes. The, uh, yes, the, we'll draw it down, um, based on those amounts. We'll draw it down from the state in twenty twenty-one, but yes, it would be the state funds supporting both of those projects.
Okay. That makes sense. I just for a hot second went, whoa, wait a minute. What's the county doing? Because oftentimes, you know, we, we want to say it's even and we all know it's not. And so we just want to make sure that everybody's paying their fair share of what services need to be done and then making the most impact as possible when it comes to, um, mental illness and any, anything that needs help. We know it's been a tough, tough year. And so whatever we can do to try We know it's been a tough, tough year and so whatever we can do to try to get people the resources that they need is important. So thank you. That's it.
Counselor Nitzer.
It does look like a well-thought-out plan and I do want to recognize the provider. We did see some statistics earlier this week from the mayor. Looks really, really promising, really good. So congratulations. As far as the operating support dollars, so obviously we have multiple entities, you know, county, cities and the health systems. I can't remember if there was still a shortfall or is this going to just reduce everybody's contribution each year in some sort of pro-rata form or something?
So the original contract and the original commitment by the four parties will stand. And so this does shore up any operating gaps that we had, gets everybody involved in the project through that initial pilot period of three years and this will hopefully also take us somewhat beyond that. In that second year, two and a half years, you know, we'll all be sitting back at the table to really look at all of the revenue and expenses and making a plan for the four partners moving forward.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you. Again, a well-thought-out plan as Counselor Nitzer had said and congratulations on the good start. I had a chance to sit down with Maddie last week and meet with her and even more convinced that she's going to do amazing in her role and getting some good momentum started, which is the key to that. Did I hear this right? So like some of these funds, are we looking to do something with the second floor like already with these? We're looking to, we're already moving up and doing some of that because I know it's been talked about it, even Maddie had shown me some of the ideas up there too.
Yeah, a limited remodeling of second floor. We want to preserve some of second floor so that we can expand services, but at this time there is the opportunity to remodel some bathrooms as well as add a patient recreation space. So, and there's a smattering of other projects. As I mentioned, there's a small area in the basement that needs touched up, the main floor, public restrooms as well. So yes, there are some second floor and other opportunities within the building that we can make improvements now and then really be thoughtful in how we expand services in second floor later.
Terrific. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Starr.
Thank you. Assistant Director, tell me, where do these folks go after they finish their three, five days, whatever the length of stay is? I mean, what's the next step for them? If I really want to turn my life around and I want help or, which is probably more true, I'm not going to ask for help and I'm not going to continue on. So what's the next step when they walk out the door as part of that discharge planning for them?
Yeah, and I may ask Maddie to come up and help me with this question because she has the boots-on-the-ground experience based on the last six weeks. Would you be willing to come up? Great.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Starr. We offer folks that come in for detox an assessment while they're with us. So we have them visit with our chemical dependency counselor who's onsite Monday through Friday. And then he will provide a recommendation for the level of treatment that he feels is appropriate for them. So if it's an outpatient treatment, intensive outpatient or an inpatient service, if someone doesn't have a safe disposition, if we're not able to provide an avenue that really helps support them to be sober while they try to get into that treatment service, we have partnered with Southeastern and we rent some transitional housing beds from one of their services. And that's been incredibly helpful to us to offer folks that step in between because we know so often it's that gap between the Link and then their ongoing treatment that prevents them from being successful. So we've leaned on those transitional housing beds, but we've also been trying to educate ourselves and lean on other community agencies that do have other case management opportunities and partnerships to help them continue to be successful in their sobriety.
What happens with the folks who just say, I'm just, I want to go?
Yeah.
And that part of it, because it's not a forced program, but it's certainly a place and I mean, people who deal with alcohol and drug addiction.
Yeah.
We're not going there. So is it just to release them back to the street at that point then or how you try to do the best you can?
We try to do the best we can and that's where it kind of comes down to each individual person and their wishes. We try our best to offer them opportunities to engage in community services, to make changes, but for the individual who doesn't want to make a change and that's what they want to do, that's what we allow them to do. We still offer that same opportunity when we see them again, which happens often. And I can say that even in the short time we've been open, we've served several individuals that have become very familiar to us in our sobering program, but after they've seen us a few times, they've decided to give withdrawal management a try and they have found some stability and some sobriety in that. So it's very encouraging to see people give it a chance and give themselves a chance at recovery. And I'll say that the word of mouth that has spread has been really encouraging as well. We've had a few people that have come off of the street, typically a sobering client, gone through withdrawal. Maybe they're still relapsing, but they have told their friends, you deserve this, you should go try this and get treatment. And now their friends are in treatment. So I think there's still so much good that keeps trickling through the community and I do hope that that word of mouth continues to spread and we continue to be utilized.
One more quick if I can.
Go ahead.
So then is there, are there beds available at Southeastern? Are there beds available? Like Safe Home would probably be an option for some of those folks. I feel like we lose but win with Safe Home. It's a great program, but it's getting those people off the street that, you know, don't want to treat their addiction, at least at the beginning of it. So is that an option too or how?
Yeah.
Do you look at that as a loss or?
No, I think Safe Home is a wonderful alternative for some clients. From what I understand, and you're probably a little more educated, but I think their waitlist is long and we probably could use some more opportunities like a Safe Home for some clients. So I think it would definitely be a referral option, but from what I've understood, there's just always a waiting list for that service particularly, so.
I guess that was kind of the point where I was headed because the last time that I've toured and talked, they need the extra space too because that's why, you know, for me, a win is someone who wants to change their life and do the behavior modification and treat their addiction, but we have to, it's too expensive for the people who aren't treating that addiction to just send them back to the street to continue the cycle of detox and the EDs. And so that's what we were trying to get to, but if we don't have any place for them to go after they leave the triage center, I mean, then we're kind of, we're partway down the street of where we want to go to help folks and to save taxpayers' money. That's the reality of it is some of, some of these individuals cost the taxpayer a large amount of money, six figures every year, and that's what we're trying to get away from. So if we don't have anywhere for them to go, then we're still costing us a lot of money.
Yeah, and I'll say that's definitely one of the gaps we continue to hear from other agencies that we partner with. Alliance has been another strong partner. We partner with them for case management services and they're trying to figure out how they can best mesh with our clients and try to meet them and kind of get them wrapped under their wing of services so that they can continue to follow up with them. I was with downtown Sioux Falls this morning and the same question came from one of our merchants of, well, what happens with these people that they, maybe they were at the Link yesterday, but they're not today and what's the aftercare plan? And we can have the best intentions with handoff and connections to services, but I think we do as a community have some work to do in terms of that continued aftercare and how we can continue to support people to be successful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for your guys' presentation. We're grateful. It's a community priority and obviously through the state, our tax dollars at work helping these issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you, City Council.
We're going to move on now to public comment. I'd invite anyone from the public to speak on items discussed here today. Please come forward right now and then state your name and you'll have up to five minutes to speak. Thank you.
Sierra, Bruce, out of Sioux Falls. This is what they didn't tell you about the Link. They're still housing people in the hospitals because they're over capacity with the Link. They didn't know this when they bought the Link, that they were going to have more people so we're going to have to add up a two-story. They didn't tell you that, did they? Because they want to cover it up. These are rich people. The Link is not for your rich people, they're for your underprivileged people to begin with. No rich people is going to go to the Link. Start to reviving doors, just like when we talked to judges and that about reviving door trespassers to make a bond and stop putting them out on a PR bond, letting them out and they have to come back. These people are like the Bishop Dudley. Start doing more so they don't have to come back to the Bishop Dudley. Same thing with the Link. Let's do stuff so where they don't have to come back. The police department told me that they're still putting people in the hospitals for detox into the hospitals right now because they're over capacity at the Link. The Link should have said this from the get-go, so the taxpayers' money, have the people, if they want a second story, have the private people take money out of their pockets to do the second story. Because this is ridiculous. These transits have maybe need some issues or whatever, I don't know what it is. I'm not somebody's psychiatrist. I'm working on the streets to incarcerate. I'm not here to say drop your guns and drop your drugs and let's do sex therapists here or drug addiction. This is not for me here. We got to clean up the streets here. But the Link, when it first opened, the police told me that they were over capacity. Where are we going to put these people, Sierra? We're still putting them in the hospitals. Can you think the police can come here and tell you? Absolutely not. That's why I ran here to tell y'all because they're going to sugarcoat it, the city will. Now they want some more money to do a second story. A second story is not enough. We need a sky, a sky rise for all these individuals. I don't know what it's going to take. Now, here's the second part of it. When you, because I know from firsthand, so when you call the police on intoxicated people, it's up to the police officer to assess that person to see if they go to the Link or not. They just don't bring them straight to the Link. So there's a lot of loopholes to this. It just saddens me because it's a disgrace that we have to be here on a second story. We need to have planned and thought this out in the first place instead of stop rushing like development, rushing to it and then now we have a big sinkhole now what we do with all these millions of dollars. Now we rushing into the Link and now we want to invest more money. This is bizarre. We're back behind times 20 years, guys. I'm serious. I'm not trying to judge y'all. I'm not from South Dakota, I'm a transplant. We're back 20 years. I see it in the court systems. I see it with the Link now. We got to get up to date with stuff here. I am not about to decide who needs to go to the Link or who needs not to go to the Link. But I thought that the purpose was to keep them out of the hospitals. Now let me tell you something with the VARA. They had so many people in detox two weeks ago that they didn't even have room for their patients that were coming in, that they had to put them in the old section. Did they tell you that? No, they didn't, did they? I don't got time for people's sex addiction, I don't got time for people's alcohol, I want my neighborhood cleaned up. So I'm sending them to the court system and I'm telling them, telling the judges, jail time. We don't got time for all this addiction stuff. This is just a cover-up just to get federal tax dollars and make the city look good. I don't got time for it. They can rehab in the federal system or the state system. Prison time's the answer for them. I remember when a judge said this, I'm not putting you to prison because of your drug addiction. I'm putting you to prison because that's how much it's going to take for you to detox and to put your life in a position that you need to be and I'm going to give you eight months in prison. And Judge Bradley said that. I was in his courtroom when he said it. So he don't use the prison system, he uses it to get them out of that environment. Because it takes about eight months to nine months to get them fully detoxed. So I'm against the second story. I think prison's the answer. I know I'm on the streets, I better take my words as gold because I'm on the streets every day. I testify every day with these criminals. If we're going to do a two-story, we need a three and four-story then and let's make it big. When we're going to build, we're going to build big and huge. We're not just going to build a one-story and call it a day here. But when I want to go to a VARA hospital, I want to make sure I have room in there and not use it as a detox center with a VARA.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay, Counselor Nitzer.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of preparing for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, Part 4.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Nitzer, second by Kylie. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Breckie. Yes. Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg. Starr.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone please clear the room for the executive session? Thank you very much.